All right, Mayor, we are ready to go when you are.
All right, terrific. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 28th Walton City Council Regular Council Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Counselor Sacco.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Sacco. Our moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID-19 led by Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. As of today, Oregon has reported that 7,074 people we have lost to COVID-19. Currently, our hospitals are at 16% in ICU and 9% in adult non-ICU. So they're still stressed, they're doing better, but they're still stressed. And people, we're still losing people, so please join me in a moment of silence for those that we've lost and those are suffering due to COVID-19. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to announcements. We have three very exciting announcements tonight. First up is our Arbor Month Proclamation and Presentation led by two members of T-Park. Welcome. I see Emma. Ms. Brandon. Welcome.
And so Brandon Gill and Emma Gray from T-Park will present the Arbor Month Presentation.
Want me to share my screen, Emma?
Sure, that'd be great.
All right.
We're going to tag team this a little bit. These trees are too great to just keep to one person.
All right, Arbor Month. It's not Arbor Day anymore, it's Arbor Month, and that is a big change for us. So I'm Brandon, the Chair, newly elected Chair of the Parks Committee, and I have Emma with me. So what is Arbor Month? We celebrate trees. Trees do a lot of things for us. They have public health and social benefits, environmental benefits, and economic benefits. Arbor Month activities, we have the photo contest, which you will see here soon. Kids' poster contest, which everyone always loves. We have our proclamation and a bunch of other things that go on. So I will hand it off to Emma.
Awesome. So I feel like I got the best part of the deal here. One of the activities that I think a lot of you are familiar with is the kids' poster contest. So what you see here on the slide are the winners of both the K through five competition and the sixth through eighth grade competition. And students were encouraged to complete the phrase "Twelton Trees Are", and both of these wonderful artists chose to finish that phrase as "Twelton Trees are beautiful". So you see there Lucy D's winning poster on the left and Ethan C's winning poster on the right, and they're both awesome. And then the next several slides show the winners of our photo contests. The first one is first place. This is called Reflections and was submitted by Helena Holt. It was taken at our very own Browns Ferry Park. The next slide shows both second and third place, absolutely gorgeous. Second place is Fairy's Doorway, submitted by Nicole Puser, and she took this photograph at Jergens Park. Winter's Touch is our third place winner, submitted by Nils Puser at 106th Court. So those are really nice. And then the very last slide is a great one. Twelton isn't a Tree City, USA, by accident, and it's also not a trivial or easy designation. It is the culmination of a lot of tremendous work by a lot of tremendous city employees who we are all incredibly thankful for. And as a result of all that hard work, Twelton is celebrating its 35th consecutive year as a Tree City, USA. So thank you to the City Council for making that work possible and supporting everything that our city employees and T-Park does to support trees in Twelton. And please celebrate with us all month long.
Thank you for the tremendous presentation. Sorry, Emma. All right. Questions or comments for Emma or Brandon? I know we have a proclamation coming up that Counselor Hillier is going to read, but any questions? Those the photography was phenomenal, and the two pieces of art were terrific, so nice choices there. But with that, Counselor Hillier, you're up for the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Emma and Brett and your teams for all the work that you're doing, that you continue to bring it to City Council and keep it in front of us and the staff. And as a former warehouser employee, which might be a swear word to some people in the tree world, you know, warehouser's commitment to replanting and growing trees faster and better and that sort of thing was my livelihood for many, many years. And so I love getting to have the opportunity to share this proclamation with you all and celebrate the work that you and our city folks do. So with that, a proclamation declaring the month of April 2022 as Arbor Month in the city of Twelton. Whereas Arbor Day is a celebration observed throughout the nation and in the world in which individuals and groups are encouraged to plant, care for, and celebrate the many values of trees. The Arbor Month is observed in the state of Oregon during the entire month of April 2022. And whereas healthy trees reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, moderate the temperature, calm traffic, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and our renewable resource giving us paper and countless other wood products. And whereas trees beautify our community, increase property values, and enhance the economic vitality of businesses areas in Twelton. And thousands of trees and shrubs are planted by volunteers in Twelton's parklands every year. And whereas 2022 marks the 35th consecutive year, the city of Twelton has been certified as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation for following best practices in community forestry management. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Twelton, Oregon, that the city of Twelton designates the month of April 2022 as Arbor Month in the city of Twelton. All are urged to support efforts to protect and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. The city of Twelton supports the Oregon Department of Forestry and the National Arbor Day Foundation in their recognition of the value of trees and forests by proclaiming April 2022 as Arbor Month in Twelton. Introduced and adopted this 28th day of March 2022, City of Twelton, Oregon.
Thank you, Counselor Hillier. Yes, thank you both Emma and Brandon for presenting that tonight. I know I'm going to be at a tree planting event in April, complete usually with Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Explorers. So it's going to be a fun event where we, the Friends of Trees, I usually, I think, usually puts it on, and we plant a whole bunch of trees, and I think it's believed this year it's over in Jergens Park. So looking forward to that. Thanks for coming tonight. Next up, our second announcement is our Library Week Proclamation. I don't believe we have a staff presentation correct on this, Sherwin. Okay. But I have Counselor Sacco, who's going to do the proclamation. But as many folks know, the library at Walton runs head-to-head as the one of the most popular city services, parks and the library are always battling now for the top two services here at Walton. And as a former T-LAC member of the Library Advisory Committee back in the day, I really am very committed to the libraries in this city. Our library staff does a terrific job. Despite COVID, they kept the programs going and got people interested, people were still reading books. And I'm very proud of our city staff who keep the libraries running. Jeriann and her folks do an outstanding job. So thank you all for what you do for our library and reaching out to our residents. And as I mentioned during work session, I gave a big shout out to the library for those library cards going out to the students in Tiger and Tweltons to give them access to things they probably even realized were in the library or virtually available from the library. So thanks, Jeriann. So with that, I believe Counselor Sacco has the proclamation for Library Week.
I don't believe it was me.
Wasn't you?
No.
It was Council Grimes?
I believe it was me.
All right, short-term memory.
That's all right. We all love the library, so I'm sure anybody would want to jump in and take part. And as a lifelong unreformed and unrepentant bookworm, the library is not only my favorite place, but reading is my favorite activity. So I'm very proud to read this proclamation declaring April 3rd through 9th, 2022, as National Library Week in the city of Twelton. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community. And whereas libraries are opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs, and technology in addition to books. And whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Twelton, Oregon, that the week of April 3rd through 9th, 2022, is National Library Week. During this week, we encourage all residents to connect with the Twelton Public Library by visiting in person or online to access resources and services. Introduced and adopted this 28th day of March 2022.
Thank you, Council President Grimes. All right. And our third announcement, recognition of Mr. Buck Braden. I see Buck's, you're in your studio there, Buck? You're on mute. All right. So Buck probably can't hear us, or he can't, he will give a second here. You're on mute, Buck.
There you go.
There you go. All right. But that's your, is that your studio?
No, this is my wife's studio.
Oh, okay.
My, for some reason, my computer does not want to interface. So I always do it up here.
All right, because I've seen your stuff in your studio. But welcome tonight. We have a special presentation led tonight by Counselor Brooks in recognition of your outstanding service to the Walton Arts Advisory Committee. I see Brett Hamilton here. Good to see you, Brett. Go ahead, Counselor Brooks. And there's Dawn. Hey, Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor. It's really a privilege. And hi, hi Buck. Hello. Here's my proclamation, or the city's proclamation commending Buck Braden on his service to Twelton. Whereas Buck Braden has been a volunteer for the city of Twelton for over 25 years, serving as a member of the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee and in a leadership role as the committee chair for many of those years. And whereas Buck is an award-winning artist with formal education that includes degrees in art, bachelors, masters, and postgraduate levels. Buck's work has been shown and sold in exhibitions and galleries, not only in the Pacific Northwest, but nationally and internationally. Buck also participates in several art organizations and currently serves as president of the Pacific Rim Institute of Marine Artists. And whereas Buck has left a lasting impression on Twelton through his role in the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee, Buck has generously and continuously, underscored, offered his insight, guidance, advice, and hours upon hours of volunteer time to support the city's efforts to improve and expand Twelton's public arts programs. Buck has provided continuity and historical context to the committee as Twelton's public arts projects have grown. And whereas Buck has played a leadership role in all of Twelton's public arts programs, including Twelton Visual Chronicle, the Art Walk, and Art Splash, as well as acquisition of permanent artworks for the Twelton Library, the Bronski Sculpture at Twelton's main gateway, the Lazy River Sculpture, and the Lazy River Sculpture. Buck has assisted with collection management by creating the first inventory of all of Twelton's public artworks, now including nearly 300 pieces. Wow. And whereas Buck has worked closely with committee members, local artists, and staff in a collaborative and inclusive manner with an eye towards accomplishing objectives. He has presented numerous annual reports to the Twelton City Council and worked with council members as they have served on the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee. Buck has advised staff in his gentle manner, has always been effective and appreciated. And whereas through every interaction, Buck demonstrated the highest levels of professionalism, collaboration, and dedication to the arts, he will be greatly missed. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Walton, Oregon, that Buck Braden is thanked, commended, and applauded for his service and significant contributions to the city of Walton. Introduced and adopted this 28th day of March 2022. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And you, you're right, I am historic. Need more so every day. Thank you.
I just, I have to say, it's been a pleasure, and you chaired for a majority of the time that I've served on the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee. And I've learned so much from you personally and what this says of, as far as generosity of spirit and soft-spoken nature is really true. But I have to say, also with a real line on boundaries around quality and making sure that we have quality and and expertise. So I just want to really thank you so much. And like was said at the Arts Advisory Committee meeting, as you look around Walton and see all the beautiful things and people don't even think about the art that's in the library and different places that we go, that your fingerprints are all over this, this city and every, every beautiful place. So I hope that you enjoy all of your other work that you do and that bottle of wine that they sent over there.
Yes, I will do that. I just want to say it's, it's been a long journey, and we've had a heck of a committee all those years. And, and a couple of them are here tonight, and it's just, and I especially want to say thanks to, to the mayor and to you for being our liaisons. We had Donna Maddox was a liaison for some time, and we've had great that's a great way to function. So thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure, Buck. I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
I just also want to thank you also, Buck. I remember back in the day when I was on Arts Advisory, when we were doing Art Splash and the challenge of finding judges for the competition. And you always found some tremendous judges that had really good skills. And, you know, to have that network of artists in the state that you have your friends with to have, you know, some top-tier judges come here to Walton and, you know, look at the pieces of art that were displayed and for sale at Art Splash. I know you put a lot of work in getting those folks in, and it's not the easiest of jobs to do, but you talk people into doing it. And so I want to thank you for doing that. And all the years you spent being Chair of the committee. Brett and Dawn are here, and they were there. You guys are long timers on the committee also, back when I was liaison, but I very much appreciate everything you've done, Buck, especially when we had, like Counselor Brooks mentioned, where we brought new pieces into the collection. You, as well as the rest of the Arts Committee folks, were very particular about the pieces of art. You just didn't take everything. You had, you all had a standard and adhere to it. If it wasn't up to snuff, you weren't bringing it in the collection, and you led the charge of making sure we have quality pieces of art here in town.
Yeah. Thank you. It's, it's, it's a, it's a team effort. Yep. And I was fortunate to have a heck of a team. A lot of times I, they would just run with the ball, and I'd watch.
All right. But I know you aren't going anywhere, so we'll see you around town with your wife Brenda. So looking forward to seeing you again in person soon.
Yeah. Yeah. You've got a completer on the background.
It looks very nice. All right. Thanks again, Buck.
Thank you.
Next up, we, that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address a council regarding, and that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Bates, do we have anybody in the Zoom meeting or at the Poll Center?
We do not have anyone at the Zoom meeting or the Poll Center for public comment.
All right, this is, I'll throw the offer out there. Anybody want to take the offer? If you're late to the meeting, to offer public comments? All right, hearing none, that moves us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, those items are considered routine. They'll be adopted by one motion tonight unless someone in council would like the item removed and heard later separately tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of March 14th, 2022. Consideration of approval of late liquor license renewals for 2022. Consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Bricks Tavern South LLC, DBA Bricks Tavern. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5608-22, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of real property located at 23515 Southwest Boone's Ferry Road, and to seek metro local share grant funds for the purchase of said property. Item number five is consideration of resolution number 5610-22, authorizing modifications to the employment agreement with the city manager. Where any city council member like an item pulled off consent agenda and heard separately later tonight. Not to have a motion to approve.
I like the motion to approve the consent agenda as red.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda is ready in discussions on those motions. Seeing none, Counselor Hillier?
Hi.
Counselor Sacco?
Hi.
Counselor Brooks?
Hi.
Counselor Pratt?
Hi.
Council President Grimes?
Hi.
The Chair votes aye also. It's unanimous. That brings us to special reports, and we have two special reports tonight. First up is the annual report from T-Park. And it looks like we have two members of T-Park, very familiar faces, representing T-Park and presenting their annual update. Welcome.
Good evening. Can everyone see the screen?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. Take it away, Brandon.
All right, I'm back again for the Arts Advisory Committee. So our 21, 2021 annual report.
And Beth, yeah. Yeah, I want to let you know, remind you of what our mission statement is as a group, which is that we're a group of enthusiastic advocates for the parks and recreation system with a focus on stewardship and enhancement of our community. As a total, you can see our lovely faces there in our Zoom meeting photo. I don't know what it looks like to take a real photo in a group anymore. We had collectively 13 meetings attended, 15 virtual activities attended, and over almost 200, 193 hours volunteered over the course of 2021. So the pandemic didn't keep us down. Our current members in 2021 were myself as Chair and Brandon Gill as the Vice Chair. We had a student representative, Nadia Alvarado, and then Emma Gray, who joins us this evening, Denise Klein, Josh Huffman, and Anthony Warren.
And what do we do as the T-Park? We meet once a month. It's a great meeting. We have a lot of fun in it. We get to talk about parks, and we get to talk about splash pads. And we get to attend events and talk to our neighbors, involve outreach with the community, be involved with our community. If you've been to the parks, you get to see what, what we love to be able to talk about and, and hopefully make better. We are the B-City Facilitation Committee and the Tree Board. We talked about the Arbor Day already, or Arbor Month. Wow, I already forgot about that. And we try to outreach with the CIO Presidents. That is something that we'll talk about a little bit later, and we advocate for the Parks and Recreation System.
Some of the things that we would like to highlight, pardon me, for you this evening is our accomplishments from 2021 were creation oven you're familiar with, and the presentations we made to the Pasalt Creek Parks and Recreation Plan, which we lovingly refer to internally as the Plan to Plan. Also, the park asset prioritization criteria and scoring, which helped us do definitions regarding and while prioritizing with how that park utility fee would, would be spent and where, where we can make sure that we're identifying the need greatest. And with that, then the park utility fee recommendation, the creation of the park utility fee uses matrix and community engagement plan. And you can see how all three of those, the two, three, and four bullet points are all interconnected. As you heard earlier this evening, work with and collaboration on the Equity and Inclusion Plan for Parks and Recreation. We did a very bit of heavy lifting this year, and you heard from me earlier in the fall about the acknowledgement of Native land and people, which we're looking forward to having picked up and taken to the next place with our Equity Committee at the city level. Our Tree City, USA and B-City, USA Committee work. Our Arbor Month, my apologies, and Polonier Week presentations, as you heard this earlier this evening, the Oregon Community Paths Grant that allows us to do some expansion of some of our paths and greenways. The Twelton Commons Splash Pad Project, we're so excited to do an actual opening up here. As soon as the weather will allow, all of the great work that's been done and continues to be done on the Veterans Memorial Site Planning, and then continued support of any COVID-safe community events as well as possible community engagement for the bond starting in Fall 2022.
And of course, we can always do more. COVID did cause a little bit of limitations for us. And, but additional funding would help us implement the master plan goals quicker. So we want to create a more equitable, more accessible, and environmentally sustainable community for everyone. We want to enhance the community gathering places. I believe the, the Veterans Memorial will provide a demonstration of what we're looking at. And, and I think that is a, is a great plan. And also enhance economic development through parks. And by having good parks, safe parks, well-led, well-maintained parks is definitely a great way to enhance economic development within the city. And our goals, we continue to support the funding process, the potential bond, and work towards the goals that are in the, the parks plan. And our goals, we continue to support the funding process, the potential bond and work towards the goals that are in the the parks plan. We always want to strive to meet people where they're at and meet people what they need. And that's providing translation services, provide meetings automatically in Spanish. Work with council to identify ways to have members have seats when the interest arises and not on a scheduled time. To be able to meet our BIPOC and Latinx inclusion and have them be part of our committee. We find that to be very important and that is something that that we are definitely outreach to the communities to hopefully get more. More more community members on our on our committee. As I mentioned, we like to reach out to the CIO more and have an ongoing communication. Feel that parks are very neighborhood oriented, when we meet and we introduce ourselves, we talk about what parks we're we're next to. I'm next to Jergens Park, you have other people that are. You close to Ibock or or any of the Browns Ferry or or whatever park is your neighborhood park, that's the park you claim, that's the neighborhood. And that's how people know where you're at. So we want to make sure that we're we're talking to the CIOs more often and being able to be part of their meetings, that's that's again, that's been a challenge and that's why it remains on our goals. Collaborate with other city advisory committees, we had a chance to meet, I think, once a year. We have Arts and Parks Meeting, which is great, we enjoy hearing what the Arts Committee is doing. And a lot of the arts happen in parks, so we enjoy having those meetings. Promote pollinator information resources because bees are cool and we really like them. And they help our community and they keep us healthy. With pollinating plants and provide community resources for trees and bees. And Beth, you're right on, questions and comments, last slide, does anybody have any questions or comments that you would have for us or for staff?
That's the electronic version of the hook on stage, right, and your slides just go forward for you.
Music, yeah, the music playing. Can you go ahead and take down the presentations?
Of course I can, thank you.
Sure. All right, questions for Beth and or Brandon? Council Brooks.
I just, well, first of all, I just want to thank both of you for your leadership, especially around. Diversity, Equity and Inclusion and the wonderful work that we saw earlier too today from. The Parks Department around the Equity Plan and the Land Acknowledgement, I'm super excited about the next phase of that as well. I am always curious about progress on B City USA, so. I'm just wondering, is there, I know that it's an evolutionary. Program that we continue, so is there any new information that we should know about from B City?
Great question, I'm gonna punt to Ross, I think, like you had inferred, Council Brooks, there's so much to go, you know. When we look at being a B City, it's a B corridor really, and then also we need to look at that in terms of the Integrated Pest Management Plan that we have and that's that takes. A long time, not that it, you know, that we all know city governments is a slow moving process, so Ross, you can probably speak to that more.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you Beth, and thank you Councilor. So we don't have anything new to report on in terms of the Integrated Pest Management Plan work. What I what I can report is that it wasn't included in the Arbor Month presentation, but. We also, in addition to being a a tree city for thirty-five years. We were distinguished with the Sterling Designation because we had thirteen years of growth in adding. To our tree canopy and that includes native plants and pollinators. So that is a that is a achievement that very few cities. Yeah, in the country are recognized for it, it has a lot to do with the fact that we have a ton of volunteers in our community planting. Native pollinators in our parks now, and we're going to continue that and it's the trend, we're trending up every year on that work.
Thank you, and thanks again, both of you for your volunteerism and work on the committee. And I'm looking forward to your new your leadership, you're in your new role, Brandon.
Okay, so our Council Pratt, then Councilor Sacco.
I'm just so impressed, you guys, you know, of course, it's my favorite committee.
Roots run deep like a good tree, that's good.
There you go, but just how you keep moving this committee forward and trying to really advocate for our parks and green spaces in our community. I did have a question, when we were met with the CIO. A week or two ago, they had asked about the Tree City, so I just wondered if you could elaborate a little what it takes to be a Tree City.
I will again punt to Ross, it'd be for the logistics, but I can tell you that I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, there, thanks Councilor Pratt, we have, there's a, there are a number of elements and criteria and thresholds you have to meet to to maintain your Tree City certification. And so we overwhelmingly meet many of them. And so I'll give you just a few, one of those measures is the number of dollars invested. In tree care and planting each year per capita. And so you you take your total amount, we spend on trees, maintenance and and time to maintain our trees. And you divide it by your population and we we overwhelmingly meet that threshold. The other is a number of trees planted and native plants and native pollinators planted each year, last year we planted fourteen hundred and ninety-one. And we had. In addition to those, we had sixteen hundred and sixty-two hours of volunteer time, so those three measures are just three of the items within the Tree City application. That we that we qualify for each year.
That's great, I also want to mention, if anybody's got a chance right now in Twalton Community Park, if you take that path along the river, there are just a. Bunch of trillions and they're blowing and it's just gorgeous.
Councilor Sacco.
Thank you for the presentation, Beth and Brandon. I was actually going to comment what Valerie had stated that the CIOs. Were interested in the Tree City designation and I thought maybe because it's on your list of goals that that could be a good connection point. To talk to them about the Tree City designation and what that takes and they were also just wanting to make sure that. That was on the forefront of. Of the planning process moving forward for the city and that we keep that in mind and so that might be a good. Segue to have a conversation with them as the Tree City Board. I just want to congratulate you on the twenty twenty one accomplishments, what a huge list of accomplishments, that's wonderful. And I did want to just underscore that we do have a lot more that we can do and that additional funds would help to implement. Items on the master plan and as someone who worked on the master plan, I I do hold that near and dear to my heart and I look forward to. Seeing if we can find some additional funding sources to take some of these things and make them a reality, so thank you so much for your leadership. Beth on the committee and congratulations Brandon on your new position.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for our Parks Advisory Committee members? All right, well, thank you, we're gonna see you again Brandon later on this agenda or is this it for you tonight?
I think this is it for me tonight.
All right, well, thank you Brandon and Beth for joining us tonight, thank you for your presentation and. Just like the Arts Committee, T Park is a very active committee with very dedicated members, so appreciate all your time you put into this, especially during COVID. So thank you. All right, so next committee is TLAC and Mr. Scheller, welcome.
Thank you. I see, oh, great, Jerian has our presentation up there. So I'd just like to start, I'm Nicholas Scheller, I'm the Vice Chair of the TLAC Group. And I'm here to share with you the twenty twenty one annual report for the Twalton Library Advisory Committee. The work that we do, the committee provides input representing our diverse community to the library management. And in addition to the names of our excellent committee members on the right hand or the. Left hand side of the slide there, we also have Oksana Davlachina and Kaia Gill, who was our student representative and they both left the committee. Are rotated off the committee in October of twenty twenty one. In our report tonight, I want to highlight the actions we have for. Each one of the roles you can see here on this slide. Last year, the Library Advisory Committee engaged in a series of discussions regarding library operations during the pandemic. And as we transitioned the library back to full in-person services. TLAC also participated in the development and implementation of policies and programs regarding the library's new maker space. Which was constructed in early twenty twenty one and since it has opened and it's really becoming quite popular. Additionally, in the last year, the committee recommended approval of several revised policies. Including the policy on distribution of free materials, self-reported theft, meeting room use and the public use of exhibit spaces. Other topics that we considered in committee meetings included library operating hours, intellectual freedom, summer reading and the library facilities. The committee regularly reviews and discusses library utilization trends. And just as a group, I I can really say that TLAC is very proud to support the library's programs and services. As has been mentioned already that the library staff does an excellent job, but for those of us on TLAC, it it really does. Make us proud to be able to have a small role in that success. In twenty twenty one, TLAC has been actively involved in a process to update the library's strategic plan. This includes a review and discussion of the community engagement conducted by the library staff. Recently, our fabulous library director Jerian Thompson shared with you the new strategic priorities for the library, which we have listed here on the screen. In the coming months, TLAC will continue to be engaged in developing goals and objectives and continuing to provide community feedback. As the plan begins to be implemented. Each month in our regular meetings, we hear a report from the Teen Library Committee. Which is one of the more active groups and they have continued to meet regularly and are developing exciting and interesting programs for the youth. And I think the fact that they're. A little bit self-directed in what they're developing adds to some of the engagement and participation. We also receive presentations from library partners and recommend activities to strengthen our partnerships. Some of these presentations included the Native Land and Peoples' Acknowledgement Task Force. The Twalton Ice Age Floods Foundation, the Twalton Library Foundation and the Friends of the Twalton Library. Community member, or excuse me, committee members discussed and made recommendations to support programs and services. That align with several of the City Council visuals, vision statements. I want to take a moment to share with you some of the library's strategic accomplishments within the library last year. One significant project that the committee supported was the library's partnership with Tiger Twalton School District. Tigerd Public Library and the Washington County Cooperative Library Services to register all. Tiger Twalton School District students with a library card account. More than three thousand new accounts for Twalton students were created as part of this initiative. This has been a major undertaking within the library in recent months and it's one example of how the library supports the council's vision. Of a connected, informed and civically engaged community. Another program that I wanted to highlight is the Biblioteca Quidas. An inclusion project to connect Latino residents to reading material and library resources. The project was funded by a thirteen thousand, five hundred dollar ARPA grant through the State Library of Oregon. Additionally, the library distributed more than fifteen thousand take home activity kits. Connecting patrons with opportunities for creativity, science learning and more. Library staff are currently working on transitioning to offering in-person programs again, so a lot of this work is going to continue in slightly different form. We didn't receive any specific complaints regarding policies or materials brought before TLAC in twenty twenty one. Library users have been very supportive of the library's virtual programs and of library services during the pandemic. In fact, in a survey last fall, ninety-six percent said they think customer service at Twalton Library is good to excellent. And ninety-five percent agreed that the library is a welcoming place. TLAC holds open meetings and members of the public and you all are invited to attend. In addition, the committee regularly reviews and provides feedback on comment cards submitted by library patrons. And as a personal note, that's one of my favorite parts of the monthly meetings is hearing. How people are happy to receive service from our library staff. And really, the last thing that I want to say is TLAC, all of us really appreciates your, the council's ongoing support for our public library. And now Jerian and I are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Mr. Scheller or Jerian? You must, I was gonna say, we must have hit out of the park with no questions, but okay, there's probably more praise for you, Council Brooks and then Council Pratt.
Because, well, I want to thank you, yes, for your service to our community and support of the library. And it is amazing that what you've been able to do during COVID. And your leadership too, I really appreciate you, Ian. The Maker Space is super exciting. And the Library of Things, which we haven't talked about that much lately as well, but I imagine with people getting back to. Back to in-person, that there'll be more things and space, Maker Space stuff. I think that this program of three thousand students through our school system being connected to the library is amazing. I'm really glad that our mayor mentioned it today on the news program that he was on. And you know, when I just think about that, I'm just very touched and I think it was interesting even listening to that conversation this morning. About what people traditionally think of a library as in the framework that we talk about libraries in and then really what the opportunities are for our kids now. In the library, especially with the Maker Space. And I'm just curious, because you've been there, if there's anything, especially around the Maker Space or the Library of Things that you find particularly. Interesting or see the kids interested in, and I guess the second question I had with the teens. Group is you said they're self-directed, is there anything that. What what's the direction they're going, I'm curious what they're up to with their ideas.
Was that for me or for Nicholas?
Either one.
Okay.
Yeah.
The teen group is doing great work, they've been meeting every month, even during the pandemic and. They're really focused on developing some in-person programs for teens to come back to the library this summer. They're really excited about it, so you know, the Teen Library Committee is is great because it provides a little bit of a leadership opportunity for students who participate. They get a chance to volunteer and actually have their voices heard and. In things that are implemented in the library with our programs and services, so it's really a great program. With the Maker Space, we're seeing a lot of creative things happening in that space. There's been a lot of interest in making small clay items with our kiln. And a lot of people come in and make buttons and soap. So there's some low tech stuff that happens in the Maker Space, but then of course we also have the three D printer. And the laser cutter and the more high-tech things as well, so it's it's really a mix of projects coming out of the space and. And people of all ages are using the space, which is great to see.
Well, thank you very much for your leadership and thank you again for your service.
Council Pratt.
Yeah, I have a lot of the same to say, I I've just been amazed at how you've. Had outreach to the community during this whole COVID, except for, here's my complaint, those take and bake cakes and things always look so good, make me want. Those take and bake cakes and things always look so good, make me want to bake. But it, it's just been amazing. And then how you, you've evolved the library. I did have a question though, like, how many, do we have books in Spanish and how many approximately?
We do have books and movies and music CDs in Spanish in both our children's collection and our adult collection. I'm not sure off the top of my head what, what the total is, but I want to say it's somewhere between five and ten percent of our collection.
Okay, that's great that we have that for people that they can also have read, you know, to and have that, those assets to, you know, borrow and use in our community. Anyway, I just wanted to overall thank you because I think it's one of the great things about our communities, our libraries.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments for Mrs. Schiller, Jeri Ann? I'm calling you Mr. Schiller because I've never met you in person and that kind of a east coast, east coast kind of guy, you'd start off formal, then go down. Anything else? Buzz, you know, I'm going to reflect back on the comments with T-Park of different counselors. You know, the two special committees in my heart, like Counselor Sacco said, are, you know, TLAC and the Arts Advisory Committee. So be a former member of both. I look forward to everything both committees do. In fact, all three committees tonight are sort of the three active, the most active committees we have as, as far as residents and giving city council feedback and staff on how they like to see these programs run. So thank you, Mr. Schiller, for the time you put into the committee and all the folks in the committee. I see Thea Wood still on it. She's a long timer. She's super committed to the library and good to see that she's still there. So thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
All right. That brings us to general business. So our first item of general business is Resolution Number five six zero nine dash twenty-two. A MOU or with TTSD and the City of Tiger. And this is, I think Ross, your lead miss?
Yep, yep. I, I am going to share my screen, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much.
The acronym, I'm sorry to cut you off, that's a memorandum of understanding for those folks who aren't in geek government speak.
Yeah, and I'm joined by Julie Lutman and Rich Mueller. And so I'm going to share my screen and we can talk about really some, some work that we've started. We started some time ago. I'm going to put this in full screen mode and so everybody can see it. So what, what we've done, and most recently, Council and Mayor, you'll recall, we had a joint meeting with the school district, Tiger Twelve, the school district and City of Tiger in January to talk about feedback we've heard and to talk about a potential pathway forward. And so what we're bringing back to you tonight is direction from Mayor and, and you counselors, but also TTSD Board and the City of Tiger Council and Mayor, and that is the MOU, the memorandum of understanding to, to work together to think about school facilities a little bit differently in city facilities. So I'll walk through this PowerPoint really quickly. So our current state is we have three different organizations, City of Tuolotin, City of Tiger, TTSD, all with different reservation processes and forms and different sets of policies and different field scheduling staff and different phone numbers to call when there's an issue. And at the same time, we have the same groups using those same facilities. And so, so really, that's, that's kind of the current state, and there are a number of challenges around, around all of that. We'll talk about that. Here are some of the realities. The fees are inconsistent for our users. And between organizations, we have, we have policies that are different, that are creating some barriers to equitable access. We have, we're seeing an increase in demand in new, new youth sports group reservations. The maintenance levels vary between, between different organizations' fields. And so, and so that creates a challenge for users. And we hear from users that a higher level of maintenance is desired. We want better, better, more playable fields. And it's simply not financially sustainable under our current approach. And so as a result of all this, we've heard frustration, confusion from our local youth nonprofit sports organizations. And so in two thousand and twenty, we started having conversation with TTSD and City of Tiger. Series of meetings, we talked about these issues. We developed a set of recommendations. That set of recommendations led into the January twenty-two, so just a few months ago here, that joint meeting I mentioned previously, and at which we staff got direction to proceed with developing a MOU, which is before you tonight for consideration. And you'll note it has, TTSD has also, is already, the board has already approved the, the MOU. And so what we found kind of pretty early on was that our, our values between our different organizations are really in alignment in the focus on equity and inclusion, health and wellness, accessibility, economic vitality and sustainability and efficiency. We see alignment between our organizations, but we also see all of these mirrored in, in field use, in field use reservations. And so that, that helped us create some, some really, some great parallels between our, our long-term strategy and goals of our organizations that led to this, and that is this partnership overview. And that is to create a new partnership in a new way to coordinate and cooperate between the organizations and to develop an amenable, long-term strategy for the increased public use and stewardship of, of sports and athletic fields. Let's figure out how to get more kids out so that we can, out on the field and playing so that we can accomplish and work towards these goals that all of our organizations share. And, and here specifically how, what those look like, what those values look like in form of, in form of athletic field use. One is that we, we know if we can get more kids out of the fields, we can increase physical, mental, and emotional wellness of our youth. And we know by working together, we can ensure equity and access for all. We can, we can level the playing field and create policies that get rid of barriers. We can more efficiently use and steward our publicly owned spaces. For example, school district fields right now that are, that are sitting empty because the condition of the field is not up to par for competition, we know we can use those spaces more efficiently. And, and like I said previously, the last bullet to reduce barriers for entry for our youth. So within the MOU, what you'll see is one, a couple of, well, a couple of main, main bullet points. One, to dedicate staff resources to start to really figure out what this looks like, what this partnership looks like through an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement. And so it's dedicating staff resources to attend meetings, perform outreach, connect with our user groups, our youth sports nonprofits, our adult user groups, our for-profit user groups on our athletic fields. It's to develop a set of recommendations that will, that will be built into the IGA for your future, future consideration. And then the second bullet is to develop shared reservation practices and policies. So let's figure out a shared fee schedule so we don't have these inconsistencies in fees. Let's define priority user groups so we know our youth, local youth sports nonprofit groups have priority. And let's make sure that happens through the same set of, of policies. And then, as we talked about previously, let's develop a needs-based, equity-based allocation model and, and work with our user groups, our youth sports nonprofits groups to make sure that that happens. And then simplify and streamline. Let's make it easy for people to get out on our, on our fields. Whether it be a City of Tiger field or a City of Tuolotin field or a TTSD field, let's figure out how to make it user-friendly. And then a few more key points is to define how and when a, a field, a, a shared common field and a facility scheduler would be created. So all the, all the details behind a shared field scheduler, that would all be built into an IGA. And in essence, hiring one point of contact, one person to, to manage all of the fields, the three, between the three organizations. That's, that first bullet is, is talking about. And then the second bullet is, let's within an IGA identify priority sites, school sites, where we know if we can share investment on those fields, that we can get a, a high-quality measurable outcome and measurable, measurable return for the investment on those fields. And then let's figure out how to fund it and, and find funding opportunities that will help us reach, reach those goals that we set up previously in the previous slides. And so that's generally the work. And so what we're asking for tonight is, is considerate, your consideration for approval of the MOU, the memorandum of understanding. And then that will then trigger the work and make, and really make formal, formalize the, the city, the two cities and the school district to cooper, work cooperatively to develop an IGA. And take all of that information and incorporate these different work areas in, using those shared goals identified in the MOU. And then we will bring back the IGA to each council or board for consideration for adoption. And at which time we will have a, a formal three-organization partnership that, that helps us achieve those goals that we laid out previously. And so that is a, that is a quick overview of what this MOU does and, and will do. And I will stop sharing my screen here and would love to entertain and answer any questions or concerns or thoughts that anyone has.
Thanks, Ross. Council Pratt.
Hi, Ross. I'm reading through this, you know, I really appreciate the goals and there's a lot of great words in there, like working in good faith and long-term and being amenable. I, you know, generally, I think this could be a great thing. My question, I guess, really is like, I think this could work well, but I think there's a lot of moving parts and it's going to be, have to be a very cooperative working with the other two governmental entities. So are we just going to get this at the very end? Like, I have so many questions. I, I feel like we, we got this introduced to us and we all kind of went, yeah, it sounds like a good idea on the big level. But do we have no input until this IGA is like ready to be signed as counselors? Or where do we come in, anywhere in the middle of the process?
Great, great question. Good feedback. Thank you. Certainly, we will, we will be sure to, one, check back in as we progress. We see this as probably a year-plus-long project to process for us to develop an IGA. There's a lot of detail that goes into these different partnership IGAs. And so we want to, we want to keep you updated as to our status, and so we'd be happy to do that. The other element I'll, I will also add is we will be connecting with our user groups and our users of our sports fields in developing all of this. And, and because it is, the intent here is very clear. The benefit is to our entire community, and so our entire community needs to be a part of creating it. And so that, those venues as well, we'll be happy to share those, those opportunities and dates with, with everyone. And we'll likely have those meetings broadcast widely, those meeting dates broadcast widely.
If I could jump in and just say that I can imagine the IGA being in, in chunks in various sections and bringing those sections individually back through the process through the council for feedback and of course with the outreach. But not all at once, not all at once, right? There's just too much, so many moving pieces. So I can imagine, you know, chunking it out and bringing it back for your feedback and whether that's the fee schedule or the, the improvements, the fields, the, you know, there's probably four or five different sections that need to come back to you.
Okay, yeah, there's just so many questions I have, like, I mean, one, Council of Hillary mentioned last time, like, if, if we really want to maximize our use of these fields, we need more sports fields with lights. And I want to know who's going to pay for them and they're, you know, I can imagine you've got even more thousands of ideas about this whole process. So it'd just be nice to know as we go along. And I will say that I have that most faith in the Parks people to outreach to our community. So thank you for that.
Other questions, comments? Council Hillary, and then Council President Grimes.
No, thank you, Mayor. So this might be getting too into the weeds, but I'm just curious how like, which fields are we talking about? Like, really truly all the fields? Because all the improvement with the turf fields and the, you know, the parent groups, organizations that have put so much money into barn, you know, building barns and, you know, improvement on scoreboards and all those sorts of things in both communities. And then with, you know, coming online potentially with the Basalt Creek, you know, hope of maybe some fields. So I wonder, I guess that's a second question, how you're going to address that? And then potentially, you know, whatever fields may end up at our rutkin. So how are you going to look at those potential things? And it might be getting too far into the wheel, weeds. My real question is, what's up with the turf? If you know.
Yeah, thank you, Council, Councilor. The, yeah, we, we, there is no set field, fields to invest in at this point or to share. We have had numerous conversations with our youth sports groups in Tuolotin. And yes, they, all of the groups say there are fields, they identify fields specifically that, that are ready for investment. And so I could, I could list, I could list those three or four fields for you. But without having had that conversation with TTSD and Tiger, it would, I would be misleading at this point. But yes, funding and and probably benefit for a level of investment that, that ROI needs to be considered when we're doing this. And, and then your question about turf, artificial turf fields?
The ones that exist already is what I'm wondering is, are they going to be, how, how they be looked at?
Yeah, yeah. So, so those fields certainly will be part of the equation. The intent and at least initial thinking is that the agreements that the City of Tiger has and the City of Tuolotin that we have would be considered or rolled into this new IGA. And that there would, that whatever current use we have, it would just be duplicated in the new IGA. So that's, that's the thinking at this point, but it's
Then that's what it will move forward. And guess, I guess what I'm looking at is, you know, potentially the upper field at Tuolotin High School. There's a softball field that is turf. There's a softball field that isn't turf. There's two fields of the high school, you know, and multiple baseball fields. So I'm, I'm just kind of curious. It doesn't, so, and that's too into the weeds. But boy, I'll look forward to those chunks that Sherilyn was discussing and, and would love to be part of any process there. Because, you know.
Great. Yeah, no, you're right. You're right. There's some great potential locations for investment. And it'll be a, a really, I think, robust and, and beneficial conversation to have with our community and our, and our future partners on, on where to focus, where to focus.
Council President Grimes.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. When we talk about resources and potential fields and we're looking at some of our city parks where we have fields that people are using currently. Is there sort of an, an analogous number of parks with public fields in Tiger? I mean, is it a roughly kind of a similar situation or do they have a lot more of that than we do?
Yes, City of Tiger has a, quite a bit larger population than City of Tuolotin has. And so I don't know their total acreage, but I'm pretty confident it's, it's more than City of Tuolotin. What I do know is that City of Tiger does have other, other fields that they've developed in partnership with TTSD previously. And, and so, so we'll work through that as well through this IGA and determine how that works. But, but yes, we, our own city fields are But but yes, we, our own city fields are priority. And if what we do know is that, and this is within the parks system plan, is that our community needs more athletic fields. And so this, this feels like a, an opportunity to answer that question in part by utilizing space that's currently publicly owned. And and so that the City of Twalton wouldn't have to buy the land and then make the investment on the property instead, where we would potentially have potential to use already publicly owned property, make an investment in it and and have a much more equitable use opportunity for our groups to use it through this process.
All right, thank you. You know, I, this idea of the equitability and the ease of access, I think, is much needed. But I also know that there's an enormous amount of maintenance and upgrading and just in some cases, you know, borderline, basic maintenance to get some of these, you know, the school fields and some of the public park fields like, you know, up to snuff. And, you know, if we have that many areas in need of work, and I'm sure Tigerd does as well, and then all the other, you know, hiring some staff people. I, I guess I'm just seeing like millions of dollar signs like going in front of my eyes and it makes me a little bit nervous. Yeah, knowing that, you know, the goals and the guidelines that we have already for, you know, our Parks Master Plan and what we want to accomplish. And I don't ever want money to be a barrier to access for these community groups and these kid teams. I don't want it to be something that, you know, it's a pay to play for club teams because everyone wants that can afford the reservation fees. So I, you know, I know you guys are going to take that into account and just really feeling sensitive about that. And then staff time, because I feel like this, I just like I'm hearing a ton of staff time. And I know you guys are already really committed in a lot of projects. So this areas kind of concern me, but I think that this is a really exciting project. And I think that it's high time that we tried to get our arms around this and, you know, bring some order and equity and balance here. So, you know, I I look forward to hearing more feedback and I look forward to when we start discussing the money and resource allocation.
Yeah, we would, thank you. That's I think both, I think really important points. One, what we've discussed, at least initially, and I think it was brought up at at the joint meeting as well in January, is that we would, we would provide some type of estimation or pro forma that provides that expense and revenue estimate for any potential investment. So we would know upfront as part of, as part of the decision making process for you to provide that financial detail before we make any decisions about any future investments. And it would be on a case by case or one by one decision, not all at once. I think first and foremost, the other elements, common policies and in practices of of reservation, assured scheduler are are the are the first and foremost priority here. The investments come almost as a result of that, that new method. And allows us to to make those investments as a result of that streamlined process in policies.
And I think for, you know, the public's happiness and and, you know, sense of accomplishment as we take on this process. I think just having those, like you say, those first two things is going to make a world of difference. You know, who you go to, who has information and, you know, the ease and you know, access for people, I think is going to be enormous. But I don't envy you when you get down to the fee discussion, because I know on council in years past, we started to have some of those discussions that it was, it felt like literally opening a can of worms. It was difficult and yeah, so I look for, I looked forward to more, but I am very excited about this whole process, so thank you.
Council Brooks.
Oh, thank you. First of all, thank you for the thoughtfulness of the idea to start with. I think that it's very innovative and I'm excited that when we have a need for more fields, that this is a way that we can actually have more fields available to our kids and our users without having to buy one square foot of land, which is going up by the day. So as far as maintenance versus buying land, I think that sounds good to me. And I think I'm going to reiterate a lot of what other people said, but I want to say it. The idea also of having a common scheduler and common practices and making things more efficient. I'm always for efficiency, efficiency of use, I think, is so important when we're, you know, using best practices for bottom line considerations. So to have expanded access and efficiency in operations just makes a whole heck of a lot of sense to me. So, so I love it, I love that whole piece. And then I want to reiterate what Councilor Pratt said, there's another piece that I feel particularly confident with you and your leadership in this department, and that's the community outreach. There's always, there's, I've never found it wanting. So a lot of the, the micro details that some of my fellow counselors might be a little bit more concerned. I feel pretty reassured because I feel that your track record, I would feel differently if your track record was different, but you've built a foundation, you and Rich and Julie of really reaching out and reaching out. I've been in in those parks with yours bilingual staff. I mean, it's, it's really impressive. So I just want to say that from the onset, as we're really looking at what some underrepresented people and people that haven't been able to get the access that they would like have to say and what kind of uses they want. So that, that, all that's really exciting to me. My things too, it's kind of what we brought up and what I'll be listening for is making sure that here in Twalton, we get a fair shake, that we're the smaller, the smallest entity of the three entities. And that again, I feel confident with your leadership and the ideas that you bring forward that that you'll be looking out for us and we'll be seeing it chunk by chunk, like our city manager said. So, so we'll have an opportunity to look at those things as well. And then some of the things that I think in a big way too is just, you know, if there's close proximity for people that live in neighborhoods, less driving and trying to be at home as much as we can, unless of course, teams want to travel. But you know what I'm saying, as far as less time on the roads, less impact so that we can still feel settled here and the people still feel at home where they're playing. I think is important as much as we would also expand what those considerations are. And then my other kind of over quick question too is with, I know that there's different pest management practices with the schools. And I'm just wondering if we're going to get to benefit from some of that information at our other parks too, that'll be safer, not only for the kids playing and their neuro health, but our workers. So those in our, in our L S R B habitats and habitats for little habitants, but but mostly for the kids and the and the workers.
Thank you, Councilor, that's certainly something I will, I will bring up and ask about.
Other questions for Ross and his team? I've just got two, and this is a procedural one for me. A two party I G A can get hairy. A three party I G A can get super hairy and having the experience of having a three party I G A in Stafford and having the, how, how are you going to coordinate? When the three parties don't get along, don't agree, how are you going to shepherd this process through? And then, as Council Hillier said, I might get way down the road here and how the issues we're having in Stafford with three party I G A. How, how do you envision this rolling out the coordination process? I'm not worried about the M O U, I'm more worried when you guys get into the I G A. On, you know, one, as we mentioned before, frequent updates. I don't want to be given an I G A or that has been approved by two other parties while we haven't even seen it before. So how do you envision the coordination process of the I G A and the frequent updates? And then knowing what we all know about our three party I G O in Stafford, how we can avoid the mistakes we made there.
Great, great questions, Mayor. So partnerships like this, there, there are examples of school district and city field use partnerships all over the country. And some of them fail and some of them are successful still. So we have some really good, high quality lessons to learn from all, from both types. And our intent is to seek those out and build those into this I G A. Undoubtedly, there will be times where there are questions or or potential challenges or confusion. And what our intent is, in at least initially, conceptually, is to build into the I G A a process by which we can, we can mediate through those, those challenges. And so I, I am confident because I have seen, I have seen I G As like this work well. And we have the willingness and willingness to look in the mirror at ourselves and those I G As that failed to to learn from them. And and there are actually some around us that have failed. So, so that's, that's my answer for you. And without specifics at this point, because it is, it is still early. The, I think the second part of your question, Mayor, is is in regards to us, you know, I think just the, the question about, you know, how do we, how do we get through the negotiation process of the I G A? And that, you know, I think what, what we intend to do, and we're meeting on a regular basis, is to lay out first a framework, a framework that we can agree on. General terms that we can agree on and then build in the detail later, after we've done the work to engage with our community members. And so, yeah, this takes a while and there are bumps and curves and and we all have acknowledged that. And and, but we have, we're, we're, we're confident, we're driven by the, the, the goals and the, and the vision that, you know, each of our own councils have have put out for us as targets. And and what's great is we're very much in alignment between our three organizations, which is, I think, is a huge advantage.
All right, just, just want to be aware of the process and then, you know, check in frequently. Because I'd rather have this take a little bit more time than we anticipate than have it rushed through or we forget to put something in there and it comes bite us in the butt later on. So, you know, I appreciate you, your experience on this and looking at best practices, what's worked, what hasn't worked and making sure we don't make mistakes other communities have made.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And and, you know, we've already discussed the delivery, deliverable date of an I G A, a final I G A by by June twenty three, so a little over a year away. And have also acknowledged the potential need for for extending that deadline and and understanding that it very well could take longer than that to to establish an I G A.
Yeah, let's get it right, not just rush it, you know. The timeline is not super important and getting it right is important. All right, any other questions or comments for Ross and Rich and Julie? All right, so with that, so this is a resolution, so we have to adopt the resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt the Resolution five six zero nine dash twenty two authorizing the M O U?
So we adopt Resolution number five six oh nine dash twenty two.
And I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion of second to adopt the Resolution number five six zero nine dash twenty two. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Sacco. Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote I also, go ahead and start coordinating, Ross. That brings us to item number two, consideration of Resolution number of five six zero seven dash twenty two, establishing a working group for the proposed core opportunity in reinvestment area, the I five quarter, otherwise known as Cora. And there's Mr. Taylor, which he's got a little beard going on here now, huh?
I'm trying to grow.
Welcome, Jonathan.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Tonight I have the pleasure of bringing forward the resolution to your proposed working group for the core area or Cora Opportunity Zone. The resolution indicates that on March fourteenth, we presented the outline and overview of the proposed working group, which would consist of not only what we presented, but also took back your feedback and added in the additional individuals, including, for example, Mr. Aaron Wilk, who is a small business owner and is also a core area parking board member. The, and also to the mayor's suggestion, Ms. Handren could not participate. So we now do have Ms. Beth Sadiq to participate as well. And the only outstanding appointment that we will bring back to you at a later date is the planning commissioner that will be appointed as well.
All right, questions for Jonathan? Council Pratt.
Just wanted to say thanks for giving us one more acronym, to Mayor.
Luckily, this has an expiration date.
All right, so again, this is a resolution, so we need to vote on it. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number fifty six oh seven dash twenty two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve or adopt Resolution number of five six oh seven dash twenty two. Any discussion on the motion? Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Pratt. Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote I also, it's unanimous, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, that brings us to our last item of general business, our C C A A recommendations. The folks who'd love to participate and volunteer on our citizen advisory committees. This is led by Council Brooks, Reyes and Pratt. So Council Brooks and Pratt.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to give our report tonight. We saw, again, we have oftentimes more applicants than positions. So that is a good problem to have. We have a generous community and amazing people that come out and apply for these positions consistently month after month. So I just want to thank every application and wish that we had a position for everyone. And I wanted to discuss that we appointed or that we proposed for appointment for reappointment Kathleen Silaway to the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee. And add Jeannie Hart to the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee and Elizabeth Michaels to the Budget Advisory Committee. So all all of them were So all, all of them were amazing applicants. And I enthusiastically make moves that we appoint them to their committees.
All right. Any questions for the committee? Do I have a motion to adopt their recommendation?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
All right. I have a motion of second to approve the recommendations from the citizen advisory appointment committee. Councillor Hillier.
Aye.
Councillor Sacco.
Aye.
Councillor Brooks.
Aye.
Councillor Pratt.
Aye.
Councillor President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Another one that's unanimous. Thank you. We had no items consented tonight. Are there any council communications? Councillor Pratt.
I just wanted to thank the councillor Hillier and councillor Sacco and all your work on the DEI committee. And although it is 31 people, the council advisory appointments, we're, we're just thrilled that there's that many people that are interested in. It sounds like you've got a really diverse group of people for us to talk to. So thank you so much.
All right. Any other communications? Councillor Hillier and then councillor Brooks.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor Pratt. That was sweet. I am wanting to share that, as you know, we are kind of winding into moving back to regular activities for our students. And prom is coming up in our community and Tigerd for our high schoolers. And there is a program in the community that does collect formal attire for students who identify however they express themselves. And we do collect clothing for this, whether it's purses and shoes of all kinds and jewelry. And again, formal attire that would be however you would identify it. And there's a collection bin at Riverview Community Bank. Should people want to donate things, it is, you can get a nonprofit receipt and that sort of thing. We're collecting up through April the 4th. And the big event giveaway event will be on April the 9th. And what makes this a little more unique from the downtown incredible event is that we do have things that are other than just dresses. And so the community is really proud to offer this. It is powered by Twalton together and it's called Dress to Dream. And it's really a great opportunity for our high school students who would not otherwise be able to afford attire for the event. So if you have any questions, please follow them on social media or you can reach out to me. Happy to share.
Thanks.
Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank again everybody that submitted their art for the Arbor Day competition. It was beautiful and really thoughtful. Wanted to acknowledge the, the, remind people again that there's an Earth Day activity with volunteers on Friday, the 22nd through the city. The Sustainability Network's going to do a pickup on the 23rd. And I also want to acknowledge the students that did a climate walkout on Friday. And know that there's several different climate student groups right now in our high school. And they have different kind of missions and goals. But it's quite interesting to see how many different groups and government, student government organizations have emerged around their concerns about climate. So I just wanted to acknowledge our kids too. Thanks. And thanks for the announcements, Cindy, too. I didn't know about that.
Just to chime in for a second, we have on April 11th, an Earth Day proclamation planned.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn this evening?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion second to adjourn tonight. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Have a good evening. And it looks like spring is here. All the flowers are blooming. Have a terrific evening.